All right. Good morning again, and welcome to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board Public Hearing on the Update 2022 of the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. My name is Jane Dolan, and I'm the President of the Board, so I'll be conducting this proceedings, and we're happy to have you here. Are there any introductions that need to be made? Other than board members? No. All right, then we will call this meeting to order. First matter of business is for me to ask our Clerk, Ryan Jones, if he will, call the role of Board Members to determine a quorum. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Board Member Grego is absent. Board Member Ramirez?
Here. Good morning. Very odd to be here virtually and see all of you, but good morning.
Welcome.
Board Member Countryman is absent. Secretary Johnson?
I'm here. Good morning, everybody.
Vice President Valines?
I'm here.
And President Dolan?
I'm present. Also joining us here on the dais, our Executive Officer Leslie Gallagher, who's to my right, your left, and our Counsel Dua, who's to my left, your right. Happy to have you there. We also have lots of staff from Flood Board, which I won't introduce because I will either speak with you or be answering questions, and lots of assistants from DWR and other folks that I see in the room. Certainly appreciate everything that's been done for the logistics of these meetings. I'm going to, very briefly, we have a quorum, just want to let you know that. We have four Board Members. We have one who is absent, two who are absent. Mr. Countryman, Board Member Countryman, and Board Member Grego are absent, so that puts four of the six because we have one vacancy. So we do have a quorum. And we're happy to have Board Member Ramirez remotely. We know sometimes these meetings during the week are challenging for our other schedules. The agenda's pretty simple. We've done the welcome, we've done the roll call. I'm going to review very briefly. I don't want to take a lot of your time. Our first item after this will be just me asking for public comment. Please know that that is a time on every public agency's agenda. Where if someone wishes to say something that is not pertinent to today's proceedings, you may say so. And then we'll move on to the item, which is the presentation of the draft Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. An overview will be provided. There might be some technical questions on that, and then I will ask for public comment. The public comment can be done by people who are here today who would just speak to us. If you would, fill out a speaker form, which is the table in the back of the room. It will be provided to staff. I'll be able to call your name. That would be very helpful. If you're here and you want to watch and you are, you feel that you want to write something to us, there also is a written comment form for you to do that. If you don't feel either brave enough, or willing, or for whatever reason, you come to the microphone, you can provide that in writing today. If you are attending virtually, you have logged on, or you have done the conference call, I will take first people here in the room, and then I will ask Mr. Jones, who has used the raised hand, wishes to comment. I think that those of you who are on Zoom, hopefully you know enough where that icon is to raise your hand. Those of you who called in, if you hit star nine, will know that you wish to speak. And we'll ask a few times to give you a chance to indicate that. A public hearing protocol is very different than a board meeting workshop or a board meeting business session. It is a time for the public to provide comments after they've received the informational presentation. It is not a time for discussion. It's not a time for interchange. So we will be very attentive to what the comments are. We have one more public hearing. We held one last week. And after all of that, and the comments are sorted and addressed and prepared, we will have a series of workshops, and that will be the time for more discussion and interaction. So hearings are for receiving and listening. So we don't want you to think we're ignoring you. If we don't start talking back, you probably appreciate us not talking back. So thank you for that. If you have any questions about the procedure, do I see anyone? You can raise your hand in the room. If you have any questions about the procedure, you can ask as it goes on. Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate your shake. Okay. So that's the review of the agenda. Anything else that I might have missed? Ms. Gallagher?
No.
Okay. Then this is the time that I ask if there is public comment. Does someone wish to say something that is not pertinent to what is on the agenda today? Anyone in the room? I see no one. Did anyone raise their hands to say that, Mr. Jones?
President Dolan, no one has any raised hands on the Zoom.
Okay. I'm going to just ask one more time. I see no indication. Mr. Jones has given me nothing. We'll move to the main event. This is, as I said, a hearing on the draft 2022 Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. And I'm going to call on Ruth Darling, Program Manager with the Flood Board Staff, who will set up this item and make some clarifying and introductory remarks. Good morning, Ms. Darling.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Ruth Darling. I'm a Program Manager with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, and I want to thank everyone for attending today. This is our second public hearing to receive comments on the 2022 update of the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. So as stated, in the Central Valley Flood Protection Act of 2008, DWR shall prepare and the Board shall adopt the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan in addition to its five-year updates. The Board shall also hold at least two hearings to receive comments on the proposed plan. We held one hearing last week in the San Joaquin Valley, and today we are holding our hearing in the Sacramento Valley. In addition, we will also be holding a hearing on May 19th. That will be virtual only at 6:00 PM in the evening. So the purpose of the hearings is to accept comments on the proposed plan. In addition, the Flood Protection Act also states that the Board may make changes to the proposed plan to resolve any issues raised in the hearings or to respond to comments received by the Board. The Board shall publish its proposed changes to the proposed plan at least two weeks before adopting the plan. So these public hearings serve as compliance with the Flood Protection Act. And once the review period is over, which ends on June 6th of 2022, we will work with our colleagues at DWR to walk through the comments and prepare responses to the comments. And then in addition, the Board will hold public workshops to go through the comments, and all of the information on the venues and times for those workshops will be posted on the Board's website. So with that, I would like to turn the presentation over to my colleague at DWR, Mary Jimenez, and Jason Sidley, to walk through an overview of the flood plan.
Thank you for that. And while you walk up to the podium, I neglected to say, for those of you in the room and those of you who are participating by phone or online, this meeting is recorded. And that is for our assistants to be sure that. We don't have to rely on taking notes, but we do know what people are providing for comments. So thank you. Good morning, Ms. Jimenez.
Good morning, everyone. This is Mary Jimenez with the Department of Water Resources. I'm here this morning with Jason Sidley, also from the department, to provide an overview of the public draft of the 2022 Central Valley Flood Protection Plan update. Can you go back one slide, please? Thank you. I wanted to begin this morning by acknowledging that California, including our Central Valley, is in an extreme drought condition. That being said, it's important to recognize that flooding can occur even during drought years. And it's only a matter of time between our weather, until our weather pattern changes from the drought we're in to a wetter pattern with more extensive flooding conditions. Among the key findings of this 2022 update to the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan is that our flood system in the Central Valley is increasingly vulnerable to climate change and these associated extremes of flood and drought. And so, we must act swiftly to innovate and develop and implement flood management strategies that span traditionally siloed water management sectors, including ecosystem, groundwater, and water supply. We must invest boldly in our flood system in the Central Valley over the next 30 years. Build and leverage each partner's unique capabilities, capacities, for funding and advocacy, and work together and with the Central Valley's most vulnerable communities so that they are not left behind in our efforts moving forward. Next slide, please. And so the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan is the state strategic blueprint for flood risk management in the Central Valley. As was mentioned, this is the second update of the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. The first plan was adopted by the Central Valley Flood Protection Board in June 2012. Producing an update to the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan in calendar year 2022 is part of fulfilling the requirements of the Central Valley Flood Protection Act of 2008. Next slide, please. This 2022 update to the flood plan includes a suite of important related documents, and you'll see the main one shown here on the slide. Alongside this 2022 update to the flood plan itself that exists in public draft, DWR is also developing an addendum to the Programmatic Environmental Impact Report from 2012 to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. The addendum document itself will be produced alongside the 2022 update later this year and will reflect any changes made to the flood plan as a result of this public review period. Next slide, please. So the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan as a system-wide flood plan for the Central Valley is a descriptive-type document and does not represent a specific decision on funding or permitting projects that are implemented consistent with this plan. It prioritizes the state's investment in flood management over the next 30 years, and in doing so, also promotes multi-benefit projects and ways to integrate and improve ecosystem functions associated with flood risk reduction projects. Next slide, please. This update to the flood plan has three primary themes that are explained and developed throughout the document. Building flood system climate resiliency, increasing accountability and adaptation through performance tracking of investments, and strengthening integration and alignment between the CVFPP and flood management investments with other state water management planning efforts. Next slide, please. And with that, I will pause for Jason Sidley to come and provide additional detail on the public draft. Thank you.
Turn my mic on. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Mary. Good morning. As Mary mentioned, my name is Jason Sidley with the Division of Multi-Benefit Initiatives for the Department of Water Resources. And my presentation today will walk us through the public draft of the 2022 update. The first slide is the kind of layout of this document itself, with the four chapters laid out, as well as some of the accompanying pieces of the document itself. Chapter one is that context-setting piece, so it lays out the context for the update, highlights the various themes that Mary just highlighted on innovation, accountability, and collaboration. Chapter two dives into the implementation progress. So what are those projects and programs and policies that have been updated predominantly over the last five years, but it looks back at other efforts also. Chapter three is that what's been, or what needs to be done. What are those priorities, risks, action, intended outcomes that need to be implemented for over the next 30 years, focusing on the next five? Then chapter four is that implementation piece, that investment strategy and imperative to act document. How are we going to get things done? In between chapters two and three, which is a new feature for this update, are going to be two-page, six two-page regional overviews, one for each of the regional flood management planning groups. They're meant to be inserts, so they can pull out, and the region can use it for advocacy and talking to their boards and other elected officials. DWR worked with the RFMP regions over the last couple of months to develop these, with the intent of them being a place where the regions could provide their opportunities and challenges and priorities in the document itself. Additionally, there are three appendices that accompany this document. Appendix A is what we're calling CVFPP background, which highlights that evergreen content that you're used to seeing at the front of the 2012 and 2017 document, that the history of the CVFPP, the history of the SSIA. We've taken those and put it into an appendix, and it'll grow over time, but it allows us to dive right into the update itself, into those themes. Appendix B being the Legislative Reference and Reader's Guide, which provides an overview of how the CVFPP and supporting documents meet the Central Valley Flood Protection Act of 2008. And then Appendix C is what we're calling our CVFPP supplemental recommendations, which provides supporting recommendations and details to the content that you'll find in chapter three of the document. At the front of the document, you'll find, you'll see two placeholders, one being for the forwards, or the letters from the DWR Director and Board President Dolan, and then one being what we're calling a call-to-action infographic, which is intended to be a two-page pull-out that highlights those real high-priority, short-term actions that we need to dive into right away, kind of more of the advocacy piece and get you to that top line at the very beginning of the document. We will be working with the Board through the public process to develop those two pieces. Next slide, please. Excuse me. So consistent with the recommendations of the 2017 CVFPP update, the 2022 update does focus on those three themes of climate resilience, performance tracking, and integration and alignment with other state water management plans and efforts. Some highlights from chapter one include: The flood risk in the Central Valley is among the highest in the nation. The CVFPP updates are consistent with previous plans. They're not intended to be new plans, but build upon the previous work to update tools and information. Planning and implementation with the lens across the watershed and incorporating additional water sector benefits can help address extreme weather events that we experience in California, whether it be flood or drought. We need to work together to help solve those extreme weather issues. Approximately 1.3 million people and $223 billion in property are protected by state plan of flood control facilities. Also, building on the outcome-based performance tracking effort from 2017, the 2022 update will continue progressing towards tracking performance of planned investments for an aligned set of intended outcomes, including looking at other benefits that could be achieved by developing multi-benefit projects. And then a narrative you'll see throughout the document is that in spite of all the investments that have been made, flood risk remains high, and native species continue to decline in many areas. This is all being accelerated by projected growth and climate change, unless we make effective action our priority and have it become more effective. Next slide, please. Developing flood management solutions that are watershed-based is imperative as we looked at ways to adapt to the effects of climate change on the flood system. Chapter one also updates a portfolio of potential improvements, or talks about updating the portfolio of potential improvements for the state system-wide investment approach, which was developed in the 2012 plan as the foundation of the CVFPP. Doing so will provide a portfolio that is reasonable, balanced, and cost-effective, using information from not only DWR programs, but information developed as part of the regional flood management planning effort. The 2022 update also begins discussing and highlighting inequities in the flood management system in the Central Valley, and looking at possible ways that we can help address those as flood managers. Next slide, please. So chapter two starts looking at the early progress that's been made on implementing the state system-wide investment approach, effectively leveraging state funds that have been received for those highest priority activities through DWR's flood management programs. Since 2007, $3.5 billion in state funds has been spent, and another $500 million has been committed and is currently being expended on flood management in the Central Valley. Also, approximately 361 miles of urban and 120 miles of non-urban state plan of flood control levees have been repaired, rehabilitated, or improved. Since 2017, some of the highlights: Establishment of the FMAP program with dedicated funding. One-time allocations of deferred maintenance and emergency repairs funding were approximately $200 million over the past few years. Appropriations of $2.4 billion in federal funding for United States Army Corps of Engineer flood projects. And then funding for early system-wide multi-benefit projects, including the Yolo Bypass and Small Community Studies. Those are some of the highlights. Next slide, please. Progress on partnerships, including the Yolo Bypass Cash Slue Partnership, as well as other collaborative efforts such as the work on updating and refining a flood management strategy for the San Joaquin River are highlighted in chapter two. Implementation progress on many of the multi-benefit and restoration projects being undertaken in the regions are also highlighted in chapter two. Some project spotlights include, in chapter two include, the Southport Levy Setback Project and the Hamilton City Flood Damage and Ecosystem Restoration Project. Next slide, please. Chapter two also highlights the progress that has been made on other technical efforts since 2017, including the refined climate change analysis that has been undertaken as part of the 2022 update. It also discusses progress that's been made on the outcome-based performance tracking framework, including work on tracking progress towards those conservation strategy measurable objectives. And finally, chapter two discusses the many efforts that have been in progress to align with other DWR implementation and planning programs to make the implementation of the CVFPP more effective. Next slide, please. Chapter three discusses the current understanding of the actions, the various implementation actions, broken into four buckets that are similar to the 2017 update of system-wide, urban, rural, and small communities that are needed for the state system-wide investment approach over the next 30 years. It also highlights the various priorities and long-term outcomes from both the state and regional perspectives. These priorities that are highlighted in this document are consistent with the 2012 CVFPP. Some project spotlights you'll find in chapter three include the Yolo Bypass Cash Slue Program, and what are the next steps that need to be implemented in that program? New Bullards Bar Atmospheric River Control Spillway, the regional flood management strategy for the San Joaquin River Basin, the Black Rascal Creek Flood Control Project. As mentioned, the highlights in chapter three are more of a forward-looking. What are the things that need to be accomplished in the next five years in those various projects? Part of the portfolio of actions discussed are the various recommendations associated with the policy issues. Part of the 2017 update, we developed a series of policy issues and recommendations that can be used to make implementation more effective, that are necessary to make implementation more effective. We're moving those forward for 2022, and we've added two additional policy issue categories, one surrounding climate change, and another focusing on equity in planning and implementation of our flood management system. Next slide, please. Chapter three includes the results of the technical analyses that were undertaken as part of the 2022 update effort. We built upon the body of technical work developed in 2017 by refining the climate change analysis, and also incorporating new tools to evaluate the expected annual life loss. The top-line results are that implementation of the state system-wide investment approach has significant impacts to lessen life loss during flooding across both the Sacramento and San Joaquin rivers, watersheds. The slide highlights that approximately 20% reduction in the Sacramento Valley, and approximately 80% reduction in the San Joaquin Valley. Next slide, please. Chapter three discusses the priorities and long-term outcomes for the ecosystems in the watershed, drawing on information pulled from the 2022 Conservation Strategy. This update highlights the need to continue to prioritize actions for ecosystem resilience and various nature-based solutions associated with flood management. Chapter three does include a policy spotlight for expanding nature-based solutions and engineering with nature. Additionally, chapter three discusses how the sustainable use of agricultural lands can help achieve flood and ecosystem outcomes. Next slide, please. Chapter three builds, also builds upon the 2017 performance tracking effort as it further develops intended outcomes, indicators, and metrics for measuring progress of flood management implementation actions across a set of societal values. The 2017 update introduced the outcome-based performance tracking framework and introduced four societal values, one focusing on public safety, ecosystem vitality, healthy economy, and what we call other enriching experiences. For 2022, we have added a fifth value to track progress towards, which is equity and social justice. Chapter three also begins discussing how this performance tracking can be implemented. The graphic on this slide kind of gives a very draft showing of what, how progress can be shown towards specific outcomes and how it might be displayed. Next slide, please. The 2022 CVFPP update highlights that while it is costly to prepare for and help prevent flood-related disasters, it is many times more costly to respond to and recover from a flood after it occurs. Implementation requires shared responsibility and sufficient and sustainable funding from federal, state, and local partners. Chapter four lays out the current understanding of costs for implementing the state system-wide investment approach over the next 30 years. Chapter four discusses how the CVFPP helps highlight and guide the state's investment needs in the Central Valley. It provides updated costs for capital and ongoing investments over 30 years, including laying out historical spending trends on flood management across all levels of government, aggregating all the potential project information gathered from DWR implementation programs and through the regional flood management planning effort in 2022 to develop the current understanding of the overall cost for implementing the state system-wide investment approach over 30 years. The 2022 update shows an investment need of $25 to $30 billion over 30 years, broken, as you can see on this slide, into ongoing and capital investments, which allows us to not only focus on those large capital investments that are needed, but make sure that we incorporate those ongoing baseline needs to provide those kind of enabling conditions that need to be implemented to get to that larger capital need. And then building upon the 2017 investment effort, evaluating scenarios for funding, we're able to develop a funding plan for the next 30 years. Next slide, please. And chapter four also includes an imperative to act, kind of highlighting some of the pieces that Mary mentioned earlier. We must act swiftly to implement innovative cross-sector flood management strategies. For example, we must value a resilient flood system's contribution to broader policy challenges such as groundwater management, ecosystem stewardship. We must invest boldly over the next 30 years, including investing in partnerships with local, state, and federal agencies, as well as landowners and nongovernmental organizations. We must build institutional capacity, move projects forward, and leverage each flood system partner's unique capacity for financing and advocacy. And we must work to protect the Central Valley's most vulnerable communities, acknowledging and correcting historical inequalities. Next slide, please. We must also evolve away from practices that constrain nature and towards those that work with nature, recognizing the risk reduction and ecologically regenerative power of the multi-benefit flood system. We must also identify the most appropriate path forward to reducing flood risk among Central Valley's most vulnerable communities. So in summary, we must continue to act now to minimize the next inevitable flood disaster, even during these incredible droughts. It's not if, but when a flood disaster will occur in the Central Valley, and we need to act now to prepare for that. Flood management solutions must continue to span or continue to work towards spanning siloed water sectors. We must look across our watershed and across sectors for solutions that benefit the entire watershed. Ambitious investments over the next 30 years are paramount. We must need, continue to build upon the successes from previous investments and increase those investments moving forward to catch up to the effects of climate change. We must also make sure that vulnerable communities are not left behind, that they are at the table with us as we plan and implement our flood management systems. And finally, we need to continue to build on the strong collaboration that has occurred and embolden those collaborations between federal, state, local, and tribal partners. Well, that's the end of my presentation. I'm going to hand it over to Ruth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You covered a lot of ground in highlighting what's in the plan.
Thank you, Jason. Ruth Darling with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. So these next couple of slides will just walk through the public hearing process and comment process to date, and then we will pause for public comments. So this slide represents the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan schedule as well as its associated documents. It starts with the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan and moves on to the Flood System Status Report and the State Plan of Flood Control Descriptive Document, in addition to the Supporting Conservation Strategy. So all of these documents have been released for public comment and public review. We are currently in the Central Valley Flood Protection Board's process of the public hearings during the 45-day comment period. In addition, these documents can be found on the Flood Board and DWR's websites. So links are provided for public review of these documents as well. So for our public draft milestones, the draft of the flood plan was released on April 21st and posted on Flood Board and DWR websites. The 45-day comment period ends on June 6th, and during that time, there will be three public hearings conducted. Next slide, please. So public hearings are being conducted in person and virtual, so there are hybrid meetings, except for May 19th, which will be virtual only. We wanted to cast a really wide net for folks to be able to join, and we know these days that hybrid meetings are the way to go to get most people to join. So public comments can be received through email or mail, and verbal comments can be received through the public hearings. Next slide, please. And this is guidance on how to submit public comments. So there's reviewer guidance. So there's reviewer guidance posted on the website. This is a link, but can also be accessed through the Flood Board and DWR websites. There's an electronic comment form that's available upon request, and this is the address to submit comments electronically. Next slide, please. And for written comments, please submit them to Jason Sidley at the address on the screen. This is also on the Flood Board and DWR's website. Next slide, please. And I will pause for public comments. Thank you.
Thank you for those presentations and introductory information. May I ask if there are anyone who has a question or clarification about the procedure and schedule of these hearings and the documents? I see no one in the room. Any questions from our online audience purely about clarification of the process?
Mr. Jones? There is no questions from our Zoom audience.
All right. Thank you. The schedule that I'm going to follow here, I'm going to ask first if there are members of the public attending in person who wish to provide comments. Mr. Jones will give to me any names. I will ask him to announce the names, two at a time, one to come forward, one to come up next. Then when that is done, I will ask for anyone who is participating on Zoom or by phone, if they've raised their hand to make a comment. Mr. Jones will give me those names, announcing one to come up first and second to be ready. So let me start. Is there anyone here today present? I see people in the audience, so I know we have some either fans or curious folks or both. Is there anyone who's provided a comment card from those who are present? Mr. Jones?
President Dolan, I do not have any comment cards.
All right. If you were too shy or missed that table, but you are impelled or wish to make a comment on the plan, now is the time that you can come to the podium. Silence. Okay. There's a couple of shrugs, which is okay. Couple of no, not coming forward, that's okay. All right. Well, for those of you who are here, thank you, and I hope that the presentations at this point were informative. So let me ask Mr. Jones, is there anyone who is participating online who has indicated they wish to provide a comment?
President Dolan, we do have a request from Brenda Guston, I believe. I'm not sure that I see her online or if she's in the audience, but that was one request that I received via email.
Okay. So Brenda Guston?
That's correct.
I may not pronounce your last name correctly, so I apologize. So Brenda Guston, you are online, if you will. Unmute yourself or hit star nine if you're on the phone. Do you have any indication, Mr. Jones, that someone is attempting to raise a hand?
No, I don't. I don't see any at this time, President Dolan.
No one in the room? No speaker cards? No raised hands? Is that correct?
That's correct. President Dolan.
Mr. Jones? Ms. Gallagher? I don't have anything. Any staff want to tell me something? The board? Okay, we're, board members are not providing our public comments at this point, so don't Well, that went more quickly than I anticipated. Let's take a five-minute break and just see if people are still logging on. I'm going to say that because at our hearing last week, someone thought that the meeting started at 6:30 and not 6:00. So let's take a five-minute break, then when we convene, which may be an adjournment, but we'll at least have a time to chat. Thank you. We'll have a break right now. We're back. That was my take on five minutes, so I apologize. Just wanted to give people time to find this place and show up and talk to us because we would love to hear comments. So let me ask, did someone show up in the room who wants to talk to us and give a comment on the update of the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan? Okay. Same very polite people telling me, don't think so. Thank you. Mr. Jones, did anyone stay online and put a hand up or an indication they wish to provide a comment?
President Dolan, we do have Mr. Phil Brozek that had his hand raised.
What is the last name again, please?
Brozek, B-R-O-Z-E-K.
Mr. Brozek, you are up. If you want to unmute yourself and provide a comment to us, we'd be happy to hear it.
Good morning. My name is Phil Brozek, professional engineer in private practice, working currently on two major flood risk management projects in the Central Valley. My question is, does the update anticipate increasing the pace of looking at existing reservoirs to apply FERO or Forecast Informed Reservoir Operations? Because it seems like a no-brainer to use all that existing assets with new technology to increase flood protection and water supply potentially without having to build any new dams, just using the existing dams we have. Thank you. Over.
Thank you for that. Are we allowed to answer that question? Can one of you DWR people indicate which chapter reservoir operations has the information or suggestions? Is it three? It's not avoided. I've read this a couple of times, and I know that it's in there, and it's something that's been worked on since the 2017 update as well. Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, this is Mary Jimenez with DWR. Yes, it is described in Chapters 2 and 3.
2, okay. Thank you. So if you have, sir, if you have the plan, which is available on the Flood Board's website, please look at Chapter 2 and 3 or do a Word search and let us know if you have further So thank you for your comment. Mr. Jones, anyone else?
That was the only comment at the time for now, President Dolan.
Well, we're happy we had someone. And we're expecting just a flurry of emails and mail. That's my expectation. And I also think that all of us, DWR and Flood Board staff and Flood Board members who participated in initiating outreach early on to local government, to local flood agencies, to local levy districts, city councils, public officials, and other stakeholders, I think that that helped give a lot of information about the plan. That's the feedback I got from the ones I participated, that they appreciate.